Is with the moment of silence to honor the men and women who have served in our forces. And then after that, we will also give you an invitation to join with us in the place of the United States. So if you would stand and join us in a moment of silence.
But to lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an opportunity tonight, and I know that normally if you have your agenda, you would notice that we had a Suyum Lakewood council member adjustment board meeting. It's not big. We have a conflicting meeting appointment. They have an earlier meeting than normal today. And so it's my understanding that's where they're at. I'm not seeing them here. So they're not sure in this. They just can't be in two places at one time. And so we understand that. And we will move to our next item, which is an opportunity to acknowledge the partnerships that we work so hard and value so much. And tonight is my pleasure to recognize the Lakewood First Alliance Club as our Wassa Community Leadership Award recipient. Joining us today is Lakewood First Lions Club President David O'Keefe and hopefully some other members of your alliance over here tonight as well. Lakewood First Lions Club is a strong partner of Culver Park School District and our Lakewood community. For many years, they provided hearing and vision testing, but the COVID-19 pandemic made it impossible to do this year. So they got creative and found other ways to support students by teaming with another local nonprofit and district partner caring for kids. And David O'Keefe, again, you've been a long time individual who's cared very much for our community. It doesn't surprise me that you're innovative and built up beyond the college to find ways to serve kids. And so when we give these awards, it's not a PC thing. It's a heartfelt thing. It's a thing of saying that we really genuinely appreciate what you've done to invest in our students. Investing in our students is investing in our community. And we're very appreciative of that. So it's really my pleasure to acknowledge all the work that you guys have done in terms of gathering clothes, supplies, back to school efforts, distributing that to families in need. You've also distributed meals for holidays, serving hundreds of families. Members have donated hundreds of hours in support of our students' families. Their generosity has touched families in some of our most adversely affected communities and removed barriers to learning during this unprecedented time. We will greatly appreciate their continued support. So please hear us, David O'Keefe, and share back with your Lakewood First Lions Club our gratitude and generosity. So thank you. You now have the opportunity in our meeting to have public comment. And I received, and we as a board received several letters to be read tonight. We will do that. But if you are here as a community member and you'd like to make a public comment, you should have a card hopefully that was on your seat. And so if you'll fill out a card, then that gives us an opportunity to make sure that we follow up with you. At a board meeting, when you make comments, it's our responsibility to listen to what you have to say. It's very unusual for us to speak most immediately in clarification of some sort. So instead, what we're doing is listening. We'll gather information and be able to respond to you in a timely manner. We always do it in a few business days after we've had the opportunity to research your concerns. So if you would take your card, fill out your name, then also make sure that when you have the card, it will run the back of the card. Can everybody hear me?
No.
And so I know it's hard because you can't make that real. Yes, I'll send it to you. So for those of us who want to speak tonight, there's a microphone right back here. You'll be able to go to the back. You'll be able to speak for your three minutes. After each person speaks, just so that you know, we'll write everything down and make it as clean as possible so that we respect everybody's separate views. Again, all you need to do if you want to speak is to take your card that was on the chair. If you did not get a card and want to speak, please raise your hand and we'll make sure we can hear you. On the back of the card, it says the reason I want to speak. If you would just make sure that that's written for two reasons. One is so that we're aware of what their specific requests and concerns were. And secondly, so that we're able to make sure that everybody's concerns are valid. If everybody wants to speak on one concern or very, that way we can give everybody the opportunity to speak. So just fill out the back of the card and the front of the card with your name and whatever your follow-up is. That's it.
Is the microphone portable? Can it be brought up to me?
Yeah, we might be able to do that. Or if you're not able to go to this.
I would appreciate it if I could have it here.
We will see if that's, we will work towards that.
I think most of those cards have been filled out and put in that box out there. You don't have them here at the desk.
Does anybody need a card to fill out?
My point is, we didn't know to fill out both sides.
Okay, that, well, and that's fine. Yeah, we can just ask them to go past. All right, are we all good? And so I'm also going to ask our technical team, do we have a handheld microphone or this gentleman here that can be used? We would look for that. Just take a moment. Every person counts. In the meantime, I'll read the information that we have in relationship to public comment. When you're in person, you will fill out the card and I will call your name and then you'll go ahead and go back to the microphone and the stand except for the individual that we're working with. The board does not respond to public input during the meeting. We'll contact you following the meeting within a couple of business days to give you the district an opportunity to investigate your topic and make sure that we respond to you in a manner that is helpful. The number of individuals or groups to address the board is determined by the school board chair. Again, if you wish to address the board, send an email prior to the meeting as well and you're able to have them read if you make that as a request. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of that for future meetings. The first person that I'd like to give an opportunity to do this, fill out a card, I understand that he wasn't aware that he needed to fill out the map is Pat Finney. So Pat, would you like to please go to the podium in the back, please? You, Pat Finney, would you like to go to the back? You'll have three minutes to address the board. Thank you.
This may work, maybe? Yes, okay. So in a minute on your, where you get your news, you may have heard in the last week or so about a Virginia woman who addressed her local school board. Her name was Z. Benfri, a native of China. She told the board that I have been very alarmed by what's going on in our schools. She said that we are now teaching, training our children to be social justice warriors and devote our country and our history. She likened critical race theory to China's Cultural Revolution. Mao led, purged up to 20 million people dead from 1966 to 76. The Cultural Revolution began when she was six years old in China and immediately pitted students and teachers against one another by hanging big posters in hallways and the cafeteria where students could write criticisms against anybody deemed ideologically impure. Pretty soon it became violent. Communist squads were raided homes and destroyed any relics of China's past culture, its history, governments, or religion. She said, "Sounds a little right, Antifa." Overthought crimes, too. We were asked, she said, quoting, "We were asked to report if we hear anything about someone saying anything showing that there is a lack of complete loyalty to Mao." There are people reporting on their parents and their parents ended up in jail. At 26 years old, she finally made it out of China, traveling to the United States where she immediately found the freedoms she had never been able to enjoy before. Quote, "I feel like it's such a free country," meaning I have free access to all sorts of information, books on both sides of the issues. In the current political and cultural climate in the U.S., however, she said, she felt some of that freedom eroding. "To me and to a lot of Chinese, it's heart-wrenching that we escaped communism and now we experience communism here in the U.S.," she said. She drew direct parallels between what she saw back then in China and what she sees in the United States today. Quote, "The communist regime used the same critical theory to divide people," she said. "The only difference is they use class instead of race." She also saw schools change their names to be politically correct. Will you hear him? Quote, "We were taught to denounce our heritage," she said. For her, she said, "Today, indeed, the American version of the Chinese Cultural Revolution is here." The critical race theory constitutes cultural Marxism and no place in our schools. Just one more program. I just want Americans to know that their privilege is to be living here in America. That's just the biggest privilege. I don't think a lot of people understand. They're thinking they're doing something right. Being against racism sounds really good. But they're basically breaking the system that is against racism. So, Warren, you've got a big choice to make. You know, the people here in the community want not communism.
It is a meeting of the board and we work very hard to make sure we get to hear from our community. And so it would be the right thing to honor the time limit that we give so everybody is following the same rule. So would you please make sure that you're within your three minutes? And if you're asked to stop, you can stop. Thank you. Our next person will be John Arbeni.
I just sat through the Culver Park School District's YouTube video explaining the journey to an equity policy date, 7 June 2021. It's nothing more than critical race theory, CRT 101, where the color of a person's skin is more important than their character. Why? Because it's so much easier to see a person's skin color and lump them into a group than to actually know them as an individual, which takes time, effort, and concern. This journey is all about racism, CRT's middle name. Racist masquerading as anti-racists do nothing to eliminate racists. Rather, they institutionalize racism. This is not progressive. It's regressive and seeks to take us back into time when people of color were called colored people and separate was considered equal. We are individuals not being faceless members of racial or ethnic groups with homogeneous cultures, backgrounds, and goals. To think otherwise is the definition of racism. So I have some questions for this board. What color am I? What color are my children? The products of Hispanic, Middle Eastern, and Asian marriage? Do you have a colored chart so I can see whether each of us qualifies? Racism is mutable. So why not focus on individual character as a mark of the pain? Or is he supposed to be canceled culturally as well? Why do people, why do people of color need woke white people to succeed? Especially when most of you, according to this CRT, are self-admitted oppressors? Or is all of this just about virtue signaling? What woke people to sleep while systemic racism crept into society and its district? What people do woke you up? Why would anyone trust people to fix systemic racism, racism they're self-admittedly responsible for? The district's wokeness didn't start with this board. It started nearly 20 years ago when activist superintendent Doris Walker claimed at a joint board council meeting that the district's primary objective was social justice rather than education. Boards since then have been genuflecting to this Marxist doctrine. You've all have allocated the responsibility for this policy, deferring to the administration. Meanwhile, the district's academic performance performance, but what else do you expect of social justice, Trump's education? Make no mistake, the board blind assensing to staff-generated policy nevertheless makes you complicit and culpable for the outcome. Your journey to an equity policy is racist at its very core, and you, by doing nothing to prevent it, have also become racist. Race is only important to racists regardless of their color or their position.
We appreciate your comments. Our next person will be James Cooper.
James Cooper, 96, San Ethan Drive, South, Mass. Washington. Oh, that's all that you need for one. I thought that was well done. I support everything you said. Evolyn Yamamotu, who planned the attack on Pearl Harbor, reportedly wrote in his diary, "I fear all we have done is to awaken a sleeping giant and deal him with terrible resolve." Well, board, you have woken this community and you've drawn great attention to the school districts' board performance, academic performance, and equity policy. It's clear that the board's attention is not on academic excellence. Looking at your report card, as noted within OSBI data, this district's performance is marginally best. 2020, 33% of all ninth graders did not pass all their courses. 2018 to 2019, 49% did not meet grade level in ELA. 62% did not meet grade level in math. 60% did not meet grade level in science. Question, I'd like answered. What action did the school district take to help these students meet grade level before they graduated? For 2019, 2020, and now 2021, what are you going to do to improve your performance? I believe that's what your focus on is, not on self-evaluations, but evaluating this district and making something happen for these young kids that you have at your disposal. I would like to know another question. What is the problem you identified with equity? What's the equity problem within the district? You need a problem before you have a policy. I think you've got the cart before the horse. I would like you, in writing, tell me to find the equity problem, clear and concise. Can you do that? Can you really define the equity problem within the school district? We'll find out. How is your equity policy going to improve the district's academic performance? Clearly needed. I've saved a minute for someone else.
Thank you. The next card I have is David G. Anderson.
The name we got, please?
David G. Anderson.
Thank you. Dinner date on my grand son, it is stung with a rock and it swelled up to twice its size and very painful. His father, which is our son, didn't want to hear it. So he called his sister, who is our daughter, who is a nurse in the Culver Park School District, who has three boys of her own, and therefore has been there, done that. And he said, "Now, what do I do with my son's swollen paper?" And she said, "Well, gentlemen, take your paper to the heat of White High" and barely bravely poke that thud in and it will relieve the pressure. And again, my point is, when we don't know what to do, we ask those who do know what to do. Here's an example. This is an article from gradeschools.org. It's entitled, "What Makes a District Succeed: A Closer Look in a School Districts That Are Preparing Their Underserved Students for College and Regard." This is another article from gradeschools.org, just an excerpt. It says, "Preparing All Students for Post-Secondary Success, Whether it is in a four-year college, community college, job training program, or the military, is both an economic and a moral imperative for our country." So how is the quote about school district doing? In 2018, only 20% met math standards. The district dropped 23 places in state rankings. The five middle schools dropped an average of 50 places. In the last four years, the district fell from 109th to 161st in test scores. On December 31st, I created a City Air Swat article entitled, "Learning Cannot Come Easy." In that article, he asked this question. "Why is education the only activity on which we are willing to spend so much and get so little in return?" That's a good question. There are answers. Bringing to the board recommendations for best practices to be implemented and renewed for effectiveness is the central plan and my platform in running for Culver Park School Board. Because whether it is needing help with our thumb that we've had with the law or our desire to be the best school district in America, there are people who have been there and done that. We need to find out what they did and made it happen here.
Robert Brown. And Robert, would you like me to bring that microphone to you? Robert?
Hi, good evening. My name is Bob Brown. For the record, Robert W. Brown. I reside at 1101987th Avenue Southwest, which is in the school district. I'm a bachelor's student voter there. I pay my taxes there. I wanted to give a thank you to the Public Point High School, which I call this morning. I spoke with them and asked, "Do you recognize that today is Flag Day?" He said, "Oh, yes, we know all about that." And I said, "Okay, so what is your program?" "Oh, we don't have one. What? We're just going to make an announcement over the P.A. system and let everybody know that today is Flag Day." I gotta tell you, that is so warm. That is so warm. Just to let you know, I have eight scripts that discuss the 32 flags that have flown over our country since 1776. The last 13 are able to be seen in color on PowerPoint presentations, which it looks like you're really tuned into this technology. And you could play that easily and read the description. That's quite touching in those long ones. I have those eight scripts and I'll send those to probably Paul, my commander, or Alyssa or whatever, and ask you to make a distribution on them if you would. Okay, so my real purpose besides the Flag Day effort is to tell you how disappointed I am in the fact that our governor has decided that he's going to mandate that we must teach critical race theory in our schools. I am so opposed to that. Critical race theory, as I understand it, is institutional racism. Systemic racism is embedded in critical race theory. I did some reading on the internet. I read it a little bit confused. I hear this, I hear that. I just don't think that our schools should be teaching that particular item now. I'm a 20-year veteran of the military. I never discriminated against any single person. I have an extensive law enforcement career as well. And every person that I arrested and took to jail, none were treated with anything but respect. So I would say to you, critical race theory is a piece of trash and should not be in our schools. Thank you.
The next card I have is from Digna Artiles.
Good evening. My name is Digna Artiles. This is my 29th year teaching, with 12 of those years in CPSB. Currently, I am the ELL instructor of Lakes and H.P. As a voice for my students and the minority myself, I feel it's my responsibility to share my concerns regarding our equity work. I can quote data, discuss technology, distribution, share articles, or even give examples of districts that have gone so far as to establish anti-racism policies. But honestly, that's either information you already know or research you can do on your own. Instead, I want to share some of the benefits of the equity work we've done thus far. I work with students from various countries, all of whom have great aspirations, work hard, and wish to contribute to this community. Yet they have to deal with the current climate of this country, even in our schools. I have had students, not just ELL, share with me that they have felt discriminated against by students and even some staff members. Our district's mission is to ensure each child learns what he or she needs to know to succeed and contribute to the community. To make this a reality, we have more equity work to do. We're not done finding ways to fully and positively impact the lives of our students, all of our students. To address inequity and discrimination, staff has participated in professional development for the last two years. Many of my colleagues and I have become increasingly aware of the need for continued conversations, self-reflection, and equity work. We are even becoming aware of implicit or unconscious biases within ourselves. Our district's deep equity work has contributed to this awareness. Many of us are listening to the stories of our BIPOC students and staff, reading books, and listening to the podcasts to further educate ourselves. Many, though, are relying on the district to continue the work they began, while others have been completely while others have completely invested in the whole idea of the need for deep equity work. We can't stop the work now. The best thing to come from the equity work occurred in November of 2019. I served as chaperone for 14 of our Lakes minority boys as they attended the Black and Brown Summit. While our kids were off with leaders, I learned other educators to be inspired, validated, and challenged. Our boys came back feeling empowered, inspired, and determined to make a change in their schools and communities. After returning to school, they spread the word. COVID kept us from going again. But when things open up, not only will our boys go into the Black and Brown Summit, but our girls will attend the young, educated ladies leading the Yell Summit. All because those original 14 students shared her other experiences. I highly encourage you to join us next time. You will be inspired. In closing, I urge you to continue with the work we've done regarding the deep equity. And we need a leader to facilitate this. They'll still take this work, too. Now is not the time to drop our district's only training on the matter, but instead to find ways to add more opportunities for growth in this area. Every one of our students must feel safe and valued. And I guarantee you, that's not the case. It takes courage on our part, but it is the duty of the staff, a duty that must be enforced by the school board in due time.
Next, we would recognize Rebecca Weisenhaus.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Weisenhaus, and I have lived in Clover Park School District for 18 years. I raised, I helped raise my cousin, who after her mom passed away, is now 32 years old. She attended Clover Park Schools kindergarten, 12th grade. My son, who is 18 years old, just graduated from Lakes High School this past Thursday. And I'm also helping take care of my cousin's four-year-old son. As you can see, I am a Caucasian person. My son, my 18-year-old son, is a Caucasian person. My cousin is 50% Caucasian, 50% African-American. Her son is, who is four, is 75% African-American and 25% Caucasian. He is a very dark-skinned child, and so looking at him, you cannot tell that he's related to me at all. And there's a good possibility that he will be going through this school district. So I have, you know, three, she's not my child, but she's like my child, my cousin, but three different kids, three different ages, three different backgrounds, three different ethnic backgrounds. And I love every single one of those kids. I would give my life for every single one of those kids. They all have different challenges in life. But I have always taught them, and I firmly believe this, and I believe the same thing for every single person in this room, every single student in our district. We were all created perfectly. We were all created exactly how God wanted us created. There is no one that is greater than. There is no one that is less than. There is no one that is an oppressor. There is no one that is oppressed. Every single child should walk into any one of our schools in this district and feel welcomed, and feel loved, and feel like they matter. And we talk that they are capable of doing anything. It doesn't matter what they look like. And instead, the only thing that this is doing is dividing our children. It's dividing our city. And we are going backwards in history. Every single survey I got this year, every single survey had nothing to do with my son's education. Nothing. We are in a pandemic. We are virtual, online schooling. And every single survey was nothing but about race and equity. It wasn't about how can our children be helped through this pandemic? How is online schooling working for your child? How is it not working for your child? Nothing. It was just simply, what race are you? And is your race needs being met? And equity, equity, equity? We are failing our children here, you guys. Like, the school records show that the O S P I was not with everything. I'll always say that my accent, but every student matters. Every student is important.
Those are all the cards that I have. I do have letters that were sent and requested to be read by the board. I'm assuming it's harder here, and I appreciate that. I've not seen any other cards filled out and submitted. Therefore, I'm going to read the emails that were sent under the right protocol to be read at tonight's meeting.
Those who desire may we be excused at this point?
You certainly may. Thank you. And friends, we can, we can anytime we wish. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate your commitment, concerns, and your willingness to speak. And so, thank you for doing that. I'm reading them in the order that I received them. The first one, yes, from Tenisha Alliance, May 17th. Dear Clover Park School Board members, thank you for taking the time to read this letter. I would first like to say that I am incredibly proud of the district's efforts to make our district more equitable by ensuring all children are met where they are, and the barriers that keep them from thriving are dismantled. By doing so, all children will know they have caring adults concerned with their academic success. I am a member of several community groups. I've found that people in our community created a false narrative out of fear and lack of understanding. They seem to think that the district is applying the critical race theory CRT framework to the district's equity work, which we all know is not a valid plan. As I read the comments from people online about CRT and equity, I'm convinced that people in our community do not know that CRT and equity are two different concepts. My hope is that our community understands that the district is intentionally seeking to meet all children where they are, regardless of race, gender identity, social orientation, or class. Furthermore, you are doing this by removing barriers to ensure all children have access to what they need to thrive. The school board needs to make sure the children have what they need. Data shows unintended disproportionate impacts to certain children. Why not address that policy or procedure that created the barriers, produced the disproportionate impact, and that caused harm? Why not increase opportunities for all children to thrive and to have academic success based on their needs? If the community is concerned for all children, as they claim, then what is the problem with making sure policies and procedures that produce disproportionate impacts are addressed so that all children thrive based on their needs? Thank you for considering our diverse, multifaceted community, full of color and vibrancy that makes us all unique and beautiful. Will Scott on 61 says, Dear Clover Park School Board, I'm writing to say that the Clover Park School District needs to continue focusing on equity and expanding its worth to support the unique and diverse needs of students and families. The district needs to address data and outcomes that disproportionately impact students of color. The staff needs training to support diverse students and families and the disproportionately impact that students of color have. Curriculum needs to reflect the diversity of students. I know many teachers from the CPSD, and they care about their students and want to do their best for them, but don't feel they have the best support, tools, and training to do what they know needs to be done. Please ignore those referring to the critical race theory against providing equity in the district. This is a talking point promoted by the far-right and leaking into mainstream conversations. It is incorrectly and not a valid reason against focusing on equity and in supporting the diverse needs of students and families of all children, races, and ethnicities in the district. Please read this in the upcoming school board meeting. I live in Lakewood within CPSB boundaries and have volunteered at schools in the district, and my husband has worked as a substitute teacher. Thank you. Here is an email written by Diane Ball. I cannot believe that our educational system has lost its way in purpose. To teach math without calculators, writing, or really the ability to gather information and compose a research paper, our children are not reading the curriculum. Stop trying to manipulate our children to disrespect authority, not show kindness, and share. Diane Ball. Letter from Deborah Hansen, CPA, dated 614. President Schaefer, members of the board, and Superintendent Tanner. I am writing on behalf of the Clover Park Education Association Representative Council in support of the proposed Clover Park School District Equity Policy. We know as educators of this district that our students come to us with a rich variety of experience and backgrounds. We know every child has a unique gift to share, and as such, it's incumbent upon us as educators to recognize that and help them give voice to those gifts. Establishing a district-wide policy, which provides the foundations for this work, is an important first step. One responsibility as educators is to help all students find their voice. When we welcome the voices of our families into our school community, we take a step toward demonstrating to our students that their voice matters. When we have curriculum that reflects all the voices, cultures, and values of our community, our students realize that they matter. When we diversify our workforce, all of our students see a reflection of themselves in the classroom. They realize a future possibility, and their future matters. This equity policy is a good foundation to continue the work we've begun in order to help all our students find and use their gifts to create a successful life for themselves. Deborah Hansen, president of the Clover Park Education Association. Here's a letter received 614 by Kristi Miller. Dear board members, I continue to be amazed at how the majority of the board and secret ten seem to be focusing solely on this new equity policy. Our schools have a myriad of educational security issues they should be focused on, and that should be the priority. For example, recent O S P I statistics show that only 20.9% of students met math standards and 21.7% met science standards. Middle school students dropped in state rankings 50 places. And CPSD was ranked 160th of the 245 schools. It seems there are many other areas that need attention, not to mention that our district already has an equity policy in place. Since you are so laser-focused on the new equity policy, let's go ahead and discuss it. For starters, this policy has been very loosely written. There are plenty of PC and nice-sounding buzzwords, but there are no concrete and measurable benchmarks involved. How do you know when you have achieved equity? Is it ever attainable? Is it completely speculative? How can you have a policy that is open to interpretation and judged by feeling? Here are a few additional questions that should be addressed before adopting anything. What impact does classifying our students and staff by race have on the overall well-being and emotional state of students and families? What benefit does it have? It seems to be divisive and even racist in definition. What legal ramifications will the district have on hiring staff and disciplining students during runs of equity? As in the state of bill of that policy? That seems like racism, and they have the potential to open the district up to loss. Much of the policy is in direct contradiction to the current CPSD policies on controversial issues and teacher-staff conduct. How will these policies come into? The latest presentation given by Mr. Tormann showed that the students of color make up 66% of the demographic, and whites are 30%. So does this mean that when you refer to minorities, you are now referring to the white kids in the school? What concrete data supports a need for this policy? And what concrete benchmarks should be placed to know if and when goals have been reached? The policy is recommending that curriculum be adopted based on identity, culture, voice, heritage, and the student population. What criteria will be used when finding a curriculum that will meet a never-changing group? Will the new curriculum each year reflect changes in the population? What is the proposed cost of this tax difference? Who decides this, what curriculum will be on? This is a policy of the next grade areas that can, and no doubt, will be used to further political agendas. It also creates an opportunity for unchecked abuse of public and positions. Our kids are captive audiences, and our district needs to honor that, not abuse it. They need to also start abiding by the many current district policies that prohibit the personal opinions and views of teachers and staff imposed on them. It's past time that the district focus on improving our students to be productive and self-stable members of society, not political activists. Very concerned, Pat, Kristi.
Marty, can I ask for a point of order? Or you want, here's my concern. In the past, we've had controversial issues, levies, union contracts. And what we've usually done is we have listened to guests per topic, like three or four, unless somebody has something different to add. I'm a little concerned. You know, I was kind of keeping track of where we were, like with the letters. You know, we asked our guests to keep it to three minutes, and I'm almost wondering if we can reference that, that our letters probably should be contained within the three-minute timeline also for future reference. And I would think if, and I know, I don't know if they've pre-read, but it's like, if we're hearing the same thing that we've heard tonight, I don't know how many we have to go on, but I think, to go back to that standard, if somebody has something different to add, that's fine. If they don't, you know, thank you for being here. Thank you for your support. Same thing with the letters. I think we need to be real fair and consistent with how they're aesthetic.
And that was the last public comment, so I think that it's
My timing.
Okay, that will conclude our public comments. We will now move to the portion of our meeting where we will hear reports from the superintendent, Superintendent Tanner. We look forward to hearing your report.
Okay, thank you, President Schaefer. My report tonight will be fairly brief, but I did want to start with the recognition of students in respect to the graduation ceremonies. So we are, as a district, proud to share that last week we held several successful in-person, key word, in-person graduation ceremonies for all five of our programs. Clover Park High School, Lakes High School, Alpharetta Community Transition Program, Open Doors Program, and Harrison Prep High School. We are happy that we're able to begin moving back to pre-pandemic normalcy and will continue to do so as the Department of Health and other regulatory agencies allow. With regard to staff recognition, today, the district held its virtual version of our annual retirement ceremony. Tomorrow, the district will hold a virtual version of our best or beginning educator support team recognition, where we will recognize our first-year teachers who took part in this mentor program, as well as the mentors who spend a great deal of time supporting first-year teachers as they navigate the unfamiliar waters of classrooms and such. Our marketing and communications department, I am pleased to celebrate Director Leanna Albrecht and her team. They were recognized by their peers for the following Washington School Public Relations Awards. An award of excellence for the calendar. An award of excellence for their video productions. An award of merit for electronic newsletters. And another award of merit for social media work. As we draw to a conclusion to the traditional school year, I am doing venues to our departments on a weekly basis. I am doing venues to our departments on a weekly basis in a weekly shout out, thank you series via video. We should post it and push out to the community. Regarding community engagement on June eighth, the district partnered with Compton County Health Department to host the second vaccine dose for one hundred eighty seven students and community members. We did that here at the SSC. And on June sixteenth, this Wednesday, the district partnered again with Compton County Department of Emergency Management. To host the second vaccine dose for students and community members who received their first dose at either Thomas Middle School or Harrison Prep High School. I believe with that round, first round out of three hundred available doses, we had two hundred and eighty seven. Plus or minus five, but I'm pretty sure that two eighty seven is sticking with me. So that was, that was a little bit. Regarding COVID. COVID nineteen, we expect multiple communications from the governor, from the Department of Health and OSPI over the course of the summer. So this next several months, we are expecting several messages that may go left, may go right. Just as the landscape changes and we are monitoring to be prepared to make adjustments as appropriate. And we will stay in communication with our students, families, staff and community as appropriate. You are all as far aware that the district is dealing with an ITS event. We are extremely sorry that we and other organizations have to go through these things. Really to no fault of the district or those other organizations. It is not a good thing. That this is happening throughout the world, really. I am however proud to say that our ITS department and the leadership of the ITS department. Prioritize our students and staff, make sure that the first order of business was to ensure that instruction could continue. In the models of instruction that we have going at this time. And also ensure as this situation occurred just two days before payday. That our staff were honored and able to receive their, their wages and pay their bills essentially. And with that review, this concludes my report.
We'll now move to our consent agenda. It's consent agenda items twenty one dash one thirty nine through twenty one dash one sixty one, looking for a motion. Made by Carol and seconded by Paul Wegman. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And consent agenda passes unanimously. We're now moving to our individual action items. And then. Paul, I received your email this morning. And so I wasn't sure if you were wanting to create an action item for tonight or if you meant that to be, you know, the July twelve. But I'm just asking for clarification.
Clarification, what I would like to see is us delay. So we'll have to elect a chance for our citizens to speak through the vote. And then we can make a decision as we go forward across our nation now this, you know, as we even heard here tonight, we've got divided positions. And says if we push this forward and that's not where everybody wants to go, then, you know, how do we do that? So that was the reason for my.
Yeah, and so I'm just. Yeah, so were you wanting to be a motion for tonight or were you wanting it to, because I just got it this morning.
I understand.
But if you, if you do want that to be a motion, then it can easily be through our processes to put it on the July twelfth meeting.
Okay, that'd be fine. Cause that's before we're not, we're not voting on this policy until August. Is that, I'm correcting that right?
First reading is August, second reading is September. Yeah, the September one gives it an eight month, seven and a half month range.
Right, and it's a, there, there really is no motion. I would be asking for a point of clarification. And so in our SOPs, just word I want you to remember why it works. Is that there's a reason we have an agenda reviews. In your agenda review, you have, you get your agenda the week before we have the board meeting. And then you are given an opportunity to gather with the superintendent, so two of you are. In some cases, if necessary, then sometimes you schedule changes only one of you. But ideally, we do it in two so that we can make sure there's some synergy in those agenda reviews. You are able to ask questions of the superintendent at that time of any nature, ask for any information or data. And at that time, if you feel like you need or want to make a different motion or to have the agenda changed, you can do so. And so that is our protocol of all his years. All you have to do is contact, is let the superintendent know during the agenda review or contact the board president. And then I'm able to move that to the agenda by giving an opportunity to have the rest of us acknowledge we want that. And so that, that would be the normal process. And because of the fact that I got it this morning, I still want to make sure we gave you provision. So that is what we do. We will discuss this particular thing at our next, you know, July twelfth. Because that's what Paul's gonna ask for.
That's fine, thank you.
Alright.
Can I make a statement though? Forget all the agenda.
Yeah, to, but he asked in advance and alls we have to do is send it out. That's the protocols. We'll be able to do that. So really, let's acknowledge that that's the correct process. And stick to our SOPs.
Um, I don't know if this is an SOP. I don't know. I have a real, real big problem. With saying to our sitting board members who also were elected that they're not. I don't know if we're competent, capable, still electable and to hold a vote until after the election.
But again.
Is that conversation for next week?
That's not July.
Okay.
There's no motion on the floor. It's just a clarifications.
Well, okay.
Alright, so let's go to individual action items. Our first individual action item. Is twenty one dash one sixty two suffers this contracted integrated money support services for twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. With YMCA, Pierce and Kitsap counties. Is there a motion on that? The motion has been made by Paul Wegman and seconded by. Alyssa Pearson. And then superintendent banner, would you speak to twenty one, let's do please.
Certainly. If approved, this action authorizes the school district to contract with the YMCA for ongoing integrated services over the next two years. These services will support academic, social, emotional and enrichment through in person, hands on mentoring and social group activities for both elementary and middle school students. During the summer months as well as being embedded in all three middle schools during the normal academic school year. This partnership is being funded by the federal ESER and American Rescue Plan Act stimulus dollars to support specifically COVID recovery. The district is supporting the academic and social emotional recovery of our students with a local partner that we have worked with and is committed to the same goal of supporting students recovering from this horrible pandemic. And I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Paul?
Yeah, I stood on the Lakewood advisor council for our YMCA here. And I, I, I think. This is a great thing. I think we need to do more of it. We also have to remember that the funds that are funding this at this particular time are, are one time, so. It's gonna continue in the future. But to talk a little bit about the YMCA, they, they collect their funds from people in the community and. We've been benefits down here in Lakewood. I forget the exact percentage now of the people in need that have. Subsistence to their, their membership. In other words, if they either get a free membership or a greatly reduced membership for families. So we, we really benefit here in Lakewood because of the YMCA. So this, this is a good thing for all of us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and then motion carries unanimously. Twenty one, one sixty three is the Taiyi Park Elementary Classroom improvements. Is there a motion? Motion made by Anthony to the last and seconded by Alyssa Pearson and then superintendent banner, would you speak to twenty one, one sixty three?
Certainly. The district has determined that classroom modifications are necessary at Taiyi Park Elementary School. Whiteboard upgrades with improvements to wall structures that support these instructional tools is necessary. This project is classified as a small works roster method project and is in accordance with school board policy and RCW three nine zero four one five five. Porzmo construction was the lowest responsive bidder for this project and the project is funded out of our capital projects improvement. I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on twenty one, one sixty three, Carol?
I really appreciate this coming to us. I remember years ago when we were starting the process of building our new schools and some schools certainly. Haven't been rebuilt and they certainly are older and they don't have the same infrastructures. They don't have some of the same opportunities just by facilities alone. And I so appreciate this school getting the technology it needs to put them on par with schools that are newer and have. More access to newer technology and such. So I think this is the epitome of making sure that all of our kids have the opportunity for the educational opportunities. That kids who live in neighborhoods of new schools have. So thank you so much for that.
Other questions or comments?
I, I, I support what Carol had to say. I, I do, I said of the facility advisor committee, but I don't remember. Where this building fit on a priority list. Ron, do you remember?
I, I would have to look at that and research it. It's been a minute since that.
Yeah, I mean, I know we haven't ever over here at this point, but. But I know it's on the list of things to do and, and these teaching tools, as Carol said, are. They really work in other classrooms and other buildings and it's nice to bring everybody up to par.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. We're now at the adoption of policy, which is individual action item twenty one dash one sixty four. Is there a motion for adoption of policy? Made by Carol. Seconded by Anthony to the last and then superintendent banner, would you speak to the adoption of policy, please?
Yes, policy three one one two, social emotional climate. This policy is written and encouraged by WASTA. In support of positive social emotional climates in schools and school districts. This policy aligns with our district's current practice with respect to the board superintendent accountability plan, our district improvement plan. And the school annual action plans. Just want to caveat annual action plans is the, is the term we're moving from school improvement plan to annual action plans. Just to make sure we're on the same page there. Goal three is the goal around climates and cultures within schools and so the policy aligns with that. As you know, WASTA writes and vets these policies, vets the language through their legal. I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Paul, can I have just a minute to just talk a little bit about. Social emotional. What, what are we talking about there and how we're helping? I think I know, but I would be interested to hear what that is and then. I, I know on the website. Oh, went down and then get there, but there was some good. Some of that social emotional stuff on the website I thought was really good for people to read, talking about, you know, children learning to be kind to one another and some of those things. But you, you're closer to it than me, so I just.
Yeah.
Something else that.
Surely, so we use a second step curriculum in terms of teaching social emotional learning with our kiddos. In high school, we tend to vet these things, channel them through our advisory coursework. And you just said it, it's about teaching kids character, supporting their ability to problem solve rather in, in a, in a civil way rather than in an angry way. A lot of times in elementary schools in the morning will build into their master schedule what we call class circles, which is an opportunity to sit similar to the way we are. Maybe there's a character trait of the day or a character trait of the month, allowing students to engage in that. Also, again, teaches them problem solving skills as opposed to. You took my pencil, now I have to hit you. You know, there's ways to solve those issues. So it's around civil engagement. I can get more specific and do a report if the board wants to report on our social emotional learning activities. But in essence, it's to support character building and character reinforcement. So when we see something happening that is a desired behavior. We reinforce that and celebrate that. When we see something that we want to extinguish as a behavior, we don't just say, stop doing that. We teach the skills to support that.
Yeah, and, and, and it's covered. There's things on that in our website, correct?
I'm not, I'm not tracking your question.
I know.
Yeah, we do, we do promote the skill of or the, the character trait of the month. We give resources to families where they can actually. Support and supplement what we're doing within the school and vice versa. We can support and supplement what they're doing at home because the greatest teacher is the home.
No, I, I agree. I just, I know I looked through them and I thought, wow, these are good, you know, and we use it for our little grandchildren. So thanks.
Another way to see it, Paul, it's helpful to me is that. One of the number one things corporate America is telling. Education, of course, we saw this at the NSBA was that the soft skills are necessary. And so there is a large commitment to developing soft skills of human beings. And so the days of critical thinking skills, while those are helpful, according to the job market are not as essential as soft skills, which is the ability to connect, relate. And show character and leadership. And so social emotional learning to make sure that there's that balance between soft skills being taught as well as the critical thinking skills. So that might be later. Bring some insight to it, help our community understand that we really do want to set suits up for success, which is why we are our four pillars. It's a board here to job on the fact that we understand that being a lifelong learner, being engaged in learning is, is critical to being able to take ownership of your own future. And being engaged in learning. Number two is we said that. There really has to be a spirit of collaboration for us to be successful. You know, collaborative we are, the better, we're prepared for life and work after school. We also said that character is essential, whether it's tenacity or willingness to do what's right when nobody's looking. And then we also said leadership was a function that we want to make sure our students understand, which is social emotional learning leadership. Which is our willingness to bring our, the best version of ourselves to help others do the same. That's how we characterize it. And I know you know this, but I'm saying that for the public response to.
Thank you. Question.
I have one question.
Yes.
So Ron, as we, as this policy to be adopted, will the curriculum for this be throughout the entire district? So let's say if a child is in a situation where his family, you know, maybe they're homeless or they're, they're just moving for whatever reason. They go to one school and they're gonna get, they're gonna go to another school to continue on with what was that school one and three? And wherever they're due, the kids will have the opportunity for, for the same curriculum, no matter what school they're in or how often they're coming to make any transitions.
Yeah, we definitely strive for continuity.
Yeah.
For sure. And so as with, when I was a principal and talking with my math department. I gave grace to be a few days off, but we don't want to be two weeks off, you know, so. Short answer, yes, continuity amongst the different schools and gray levels is important too. If you went from fifth grade to sixth grade. Elementary to middle might have a little bit different, but what's not compromised at all is the four pillars that were discussed and the work that we want to do to build character. Build kids that they can advocate for themselves, to become those lifelong learners. And leadership isn't always about taking a hand and pulling somebody along the way or showing them a way. As President Schaefer did say, it's about being your best self and modeling that for others around you as well. Because not all kiddos are going to be the ones that stand up in the front and lead the show. Some are going to lead by example. So we want to honor that with everyone. So short answer to your question, which I, I, I probably should have stayed with, yes.
Continuity is the.
But is there, is it, will there be a hard curriculum? Will there be?
Second step is the.
Oh, second step is, okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and for number one sixty four, passing unanimously as well. We're now going to move to our board member reports. And as we saw, we will start and run in or around. I do want to just to let you know that sometimes it's good to be on a pacing schedule. So if you're teaching, you know, you have your learning target on the board, it'd be how much time you have to get there. Ron, I want you to know we do have executive sessions that I, and it'll be for at least forty minutes. And so that might. And so that might help you to understand how long I'm letting you on share on your board reviews. And so what I'm trying. That being said, if there was something that you think is significant, I'll just share with you and.
Two, several things to say. First off, I thought the graduations went well. And and some of the other comments have already been made. And it was nice to have it live. It'll be nice not to get emails from. Graduates that didn't have a ceremony. So that was very good. Speeches were good. Thank you. For all board members to speak speeches and more than good. We have a WASTA board meeting next week. Hope you have something for me to pass on that. I will probably be doing that in absence as an absentee. Cause I'm going to be at Hillsdale College, I mean Saturday for a one week course on the constitution. So if you're interested in Hillsdale College, want to know anything about it or want to switch it or something, let me know. Pick one up and. I think that's about it. So anything for me to take to WASTA board?
Thank you. Carol?
I just want to echo like Paul's or graduations. I really appreciate the district. Making for those kids who couldn't get to the in person graduation, they still had a stage to walk across. They had a spot on the screen. And that really was reflective of all kids, each child. So thank you for that very, very job, very good. Very wonderful job. Well done.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, last week I met with Superintendent Ron Banner and we went over the two thousand twenty one legislation. Results and we went over several of the different. Policies and laws that could, will impact our schools and districts. Just want to let everybody know too, the district does have a process to analyze and go through and determine. How to make sure that all of them will be compliant with the new laws and whatnot. And and we'll just continue to keep you updated Superintendent Banner and myself as we move forward.
Thank you very much. It is amazing how many legislative. Issues impact us and we have. Very little control over it. We appreciate it. We always want to be able to get out on the front end and do what we can. I just heard that. So thank you.
Can I just add one thing on that? The governor signed the, the one thing that there was in common to I don't see our team. And that does not affect our curriculum. It only affects the professional development of our teachers. Is that correct?
Can I jump in there?
Yeah, yeah, could you please?
So just for point of clarity, we, I, at the. OSPI five monthly webinar, taking part in that, listened to. Both Superintendent Reitdahl as well as Tim Garchow, who was the executive director for WASTA. And so I just want to make sure that we're accurate.
Would you go ahead to make sure everybody gets it?
Yes. So my understanding from the OSPI webinar. From the words of Superintendent Reitdahl as well as the executive director, Tim Garchow, that the. Bill fifty forty four, which was signed into law by the governor, does not call out CRT as a curriculum. Or a method for implementing that work that's within the bill. I know that WASTA will have a, a. It's our own presentation on the twenty first of. I believe it was the twenty first of this month. I believe I put it in your board release on Friday. So my just for point of clarity, I don't want to make sure that I get everybody has their view of what the governor signed. I just want to make sure that you guys all hear from me, that I'm hearing from Tim Garchow, the executive director of the organization, who also belongs to. That there are no elements of that bill that call for critical experience. Those are his words as I wrote them out. So. Well, I could be wrong, but I do rely on Tim.
All right, thank you.
I had to, can be obviously during ten of the graduations, I spoke at the like high school graduation. It was so fun. I loved seeing everyone there. The kids were excited. I mean, it was just, probably back when I graduated. It, you know, maybe still, but it was just so fun seeing them in person and having their families there and. Probably going to share a while with a fun state.
In my report, while I was out of town in Oregon, I did check the weather. Can I just say, Superintendent Banner, thank you for allowing us to have our graduation indoor. That would not have been. Weather looked like on those two days. I'm so pleased. When I stop and think of the true character represented not only by our students, but by our staff. And our district to go through one of the hardest teaching years. That I can imagine, that I don't know. And so really Superintendent Banner. To have a high level, a high amount of graduates. Amongst this year of pandemic. And the difficulties, I just want to make sure in here that we do say thank you to you and to make sure that that's communicated to your staff. And students and parents and families out there, we are so proud of you. And we're grateful that at least you got to have an in-person graduation. We're so committed to getting back to end the costume of the true dynamics. Of learning and the amazing expertise of our teachers and staff are able to fully employ. That's our goal. So again, thank you for all of your efforts. And that would be my board report. And I now acknowledge that we're going to move to executive session to manage the daily legal issues. And it was seven fifteen, so we will be at least. Four minutes, we'll say we will come back. Let's, we need the executive session, please. And thank you also.
I can leave the rest because I didn't know if anyone else was hiding in there. They're, they're folded over right there.
These are my favorite.
I'm just saying, as we all, I think. And you were John.
John, yeah, we're the department here.
So I thought, you know, that I kind of close out with you. This is a wonderful opportunity because when I was sitting at home, I was. Frustrated that I couldn't give feedback. So. Carol is understandable. Anthony, they're really.
Paul was, Paul was pretty logical. Yeah, I can't ask if you're standing up there and listen a little bit. It just sounds like he's just kind of like his words kind of come together like you can't believe.
No.
That was just sounds pretty cool as well.
He was already. But then he was really.
What's good to know, like I said, we really don't usually get feedback. Only feedback is maybe Ron gets feedback. Like as general, I think it's more correct. So we really don't hear much feedback in the sense of people that are like attending remotely or. This is the first time I've been where people have actually shown up. So it's like a year. So possibility like this thing here is something we've been trying to, we've only had this for about a month and we tried this for four meetings, but it's just kind of a. Trial thing, which I was trying to see what works for us. So I mean, it's good input in a sense of. We always have to look at it in the sense of what's the lowest common denominator in a sense like. Sure, this person, this person aren't great, but we can make it great for everybody and then ultimately you guys in the audience. So you guys ain't have good experiences in the world.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess as I look around. There are, there are two that are not well there. Alyssa is not well there, just because of the way she speaks.
I appreciate it.
Nice to meet you again, John.
Well, nice meeting you. I appreciate you coming by.
Well, it was very rough. It's the first time I've been.
Yeah, this is fairly recent for you as well. So it's been interesting to hear, you know, just turn the boards one view and then also hearing this tonight was interesting to hear outside of these as well.
Right. Thank you.
No problem. Have a nice night.
You too.
...
All those made questions there, secondary back row, all those representatives on?
Aye.
Opposed, the same, so motion carries to adjourn.
Yeah.